All right, folks, we're going to get started. This is Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee. I'm Councilman Eric Costello from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. I'm joined to my far right by Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton of the 6th District. To my left, Councilman Isaac Yitzhak Schleifer from the 5th District, Councilman Chris Burnett from the 8th District, Councilwoman Danny McCray from the 2nd District, Councilman Zeke Cohen from the 1st District, Councilman Bill Henry from the 4th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We are also joined by Marguerite Curran to my immediate right, who is staff to the committee. Do we have anyone from Mayor's Office Government Relations? Oh, Nick, I just got done talking with you 15 seconds ago. We are joined by Nick Blandy, representing Mayor Jack Young. We have Rebecca Tab, who is the Attorney for the City Council. This hearing tonight is going to be televised. When you speak, please be sure to speak into the microphone. If I politely interrupt you, it is because you are not speaking into the microphone. So we want to make sure that folks who are watching the hearing at home are able to hear what you're saying. We're also joined by Sonny Schnitzer, Deputy Chief of Staff for Public Safety for Mayor Jack Young, as well as Ganisha Martin, Director of the Mayor's Office of Criminal Justice. Before we begin, because we haven't done one of these in a couple of months, this is our, we're getting back to our monthly oversight hearings of BPD. These hearings are the result of two resolutions. The first one that we're calling to order is 18-0091R. There is an adjoining resolution in the Public Safety Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Yitzhak Schleifer, which we will be getting to after we do the budget appropriations piece. We've also been joined by City Council President Brandon Scott. And the second resolution is going to be 18-0092. And we've also been joined by Kalen Young, Legislative Director to Council President Scott. The first half, budget and appropriations, we've mainly been dealing with overtime, recruitment and retention, and where things are at on both the fiscal and the human capital side of things. During the latter half, which Councilman Schleifer will explain in more detail, we deal with council stat, what are the trends that we're seeing in each of the nine districts, what strategies are being deployed to deal with those trends. I think Commissioner Harrison, this is your first one of these monthlies, if I'm not mistaken. So we're very happy to hear, to have you here today. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to you. Before you begin, Commissioner, if you could please introduce your senior team that's here with you, let us know who they are and what their position is, and then take it away.
Good morning, good evening. And thank you for having us here. I'm joined by a number of people from my senior team, my Deputy Commissioner of Administrative Bureau, James Gillis, my Chief of Staff, Eric Malanson, my Deputy Commissioner of Compliance and Consent Decree Matters, Danny Murphy. I have here my Deputy Commissioner of Operations, Michael Sullivan, Chief of Patrol, Richard Worley, my Lieutenant Colonel in Criminal Investigations Division, John Herzog. I'm also joined by Drew Vaught, who handles all of our data matters, and Lieutenant Colonel Cherie Briscoe in our operations and patrol, handling community engagement. And also Andy Smully is my Deputy Chief of Staff, Michelle Wurzberger, who handles all of our governmental affairs. Thank you, and Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. President, for having us here. And thank you to all of our honorable council members. Thank you to all the members who are watching at home. I am so pleased to be here and to report on all of the great work that's been done and is being done over the last few months. To be clear, all of our efforts are intended to make the Baltimore Police Department more efficient, more effective, and more transparent. I truly believe that this department will once again be the police department that our residents want, need, pay for, and deserve. Every one of us will be a part of the greatest comeback story in America. And I want to take a moment to share with everyone the first step in that comeback story, which begins with recruiting 21st century police officers to be part of the 21st century Baltimore Police Department. Many of you have seen this clip before, but just in case you haven't, we're going to show you right now the main recruitment video that we launched last month. Since the start of the campaign, we've had tremendous increase in applications. People want to be a part of the Baltimore Police Department. They want to work for this department, and they want to help be a part of this success story. So to prepare for the increased applications, we've rebramped the streamline in our application process and how we process those applications, so that we're able to hire the right candidates quickly and then get them into the academy before any other department can hire them. So in your packet, there's a copy of the slideshow that shows where we are in the hiring process of our hiring officers, hiring police cadets, and hiring auxiliary police officers. But right now, we'll show you this video that we launched just last month. Being a police officer should stand for something, for a city with something to prove to the rest of the world, for people who want to be proud to say, "This is my home." Because everybody in Baltimore has the right to walk a safe street, to see their kids grow up, to have a neighborhood they feel good going home to. That's what being a police officer in Baltimore should stand for. It's more than standing behind a badge. It's standing up for a city. But injustice, mistrust, fear, these are things we cannot stand for. This is a chance to be a part of the greatest comeback story in America. And while it may start with us, it begins with you. The Mayor's Innovation Team and a consultant called ID5 worked really hard on this. There was about 200,000 that went into this to make this digital campaign to attract more people, mainly minorities and women, to join our police department who are from Baltimore, to talk about what it means to live and to work in Baltimore. And while we graduated the class of 44 last Friday and we started the class of 28 just this Monday, the fruits of this campaign have not yet manifested because of the time it takes to get from application to hire. But we have seen an increase, almost like a 98% increase in applications daily since we've launched this. And I think in the very near future, you will see the fruits of this campaign manifest themselves into hires for our police department. And so you can look at some slides that we gave you that shows the demographics of who's coming in, who's applying, and who we're actually hiring and how that's breaking down. Now, when it comes to overtime, my executive team and I have promised all of you that we will take the hard steps necessary to ensure the department is not only simply policing in a constitutional manner, but that the department adopts strong management strategies that will lead to sound fiscal practices and consistent accountability and transparency. Implementing a responsible and proactive overtime policy is the very step of that process. We started out by reinforcing the established limit on the amount of hours officers could work, because the primary focus for us was officer health and well-being, making sure that our officers are both physically and mentally fit and prepared to serve and protect the members of this community every single day. And so their health and their well-being is the primary focus of making sure we're not overworked and that we're not forcing them to be overworked. And so in that policy, now, we're reinforcing that no more than 75 hours to be worked per week, inclusive of regular tour of duty and all overtime and secondary employment. Number two, no more than 32 cumulative hours of overtime and our secondary hours in a work week. Number three, absent emergency situations or supervisory approval, all members shall have at least seven consecutive hours of off time or rest time within a 24-hour period. So in your packet, you have both Commissioner memos related to this topic. In addition, we created a training video that was sent to all of the members of our department to ensure that they fully understand what is expected of them. Our goal was to utilize technology in a new and impactful way. More importantly, I wanted to make sure there was no mistaking my objectives with this new policy. So I wanted to make sure every officer could completely understand the department's goals and their responsibilities quickly and easily without having to take officers off of the street for one more academy class. We'll now show you that video, which highlights our need to make sure our officers are healthy, both physically and mentally, and prepared to come to work every day.
Hello, I'm Lieutenant Colonel Kevin Jones of the Patrol Division.
And I'm Lieutenant Colonel John Herzog of CID. This training video will be in reference to the new overtime preauthorization guidelines distributed on Tuesday, July 30th, in the form of Police Commissioner Memorandum 19-02.
Command staff fully understands the priorities of fighting violent crime in Baltimore. However, in keeping with the commitment to an administrative oversight, officer health and wellness, and fiscal responsibility, we are obligated to issue updates to current overtime guidelines.
PCM 19-02 mandates preauthorization within the parent command for all voluntary overtime, BPD secondary employment, and uniform secondary employment. It mandates timely submission of overtime slips and outlines penalties for noncompliance. The PCM also reinforces existing policy on limits to hours in a work week and orders the proper documentation to track overtime approval and spending within a command.
This new directive is significant, as it affects all voluntary overtime. The PCM also mandates maintaining logs by every supervisor and commander that sign an initial overtime form. These logs are specific to every supervisor and shall be retained indefinitely for future audit and inspection.
We would like to highlight a few important updates found in Form 1116.
We removed the overarching daily overtime checkbox in order for OT to be catalogued more effectively for what is actually being used. The boxes to check now match the payroll codes listed at the end of the appendix. We added a box for the authorization to enter the projected number of hours worked.
We also are asking that the specific work performed be detailed on the form. Timekeepers will not input any overtime work into the system unless all three signature lines are signed.
These forms must be turned in before the next regularly scheduled tour of duty.
All members must clearly understand that this PCM outlines the minimum requirements. Commands may issue stricter guidelines in order to manage overtime within their specific sections. Additional requirements may include many items that you are already used to, such as timestamping the forms and submitting additional documentation with the slips.
Your health and well-being are of utmost importance. Loss of downtime, fatigue, and exhaustion need to be recognized by all levels of supervision to keep officers well, both physically and mentally. This PCM addresses these crucial issues.
The overtime hour limits are directly related to our obligation to the health and wellness of the individuals working. This is directly related to operational effectiveness.
Along with the Police Commissioners Memorandum that outlines the new rules, a training guideline has been issued that provides examples of common overtime scenarios in which the preauthorization mandates are applicable.
The command staff fully recognizes that proper overtime management will take more time and energy than it has taken in the past. This extra attention is essential to effective management.
Please document any uncertainties relative to the PCM. Documentation is even more important, as this PCM continues to be implemented. Please forward through your chain of command all questions and concerns. Commanders, in turn, should forward PCM-related items to their division chiefs. This PCM will be evaluated for potential improvements based on those items.
We appreciate your help in implementing this important new policy.
Thank you, and be safe.
So this was a first step. This is not the end-all-be-all. It is the first step. Absent the technology that tracks personnel and overtime for us, this is where we can take a paper environment and with human interface and human capital and hold people accountable by just creating the oversight and the accountability, just through making the people ask for permission, be granted permission, and then certifying that the overtime was worked in the appropriate division or district, and making sure that it's turned in appropriately before the next tour of duty, and then holding people accountable for that lack of compliance to that. And this is just the first step. So as you can see, we're working diligently to ensure that we have a system of consistent accountability at all levels in the department. We're committed to utilizing resources you entrust us with in the most effective and responsible way possible. I look forward to coming back soon to share our successes. Hopefully, this will evolve into a more technological database or technological driver that can track this for us, in addition to holding our people accountable. And with that, I'll end the formal portion of my presentation. My team and I will answer any questions that you may have about either recruitment and or overtime.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. President, we've also been joined by Councilwoman Shannon Snead, 13th District.
I'm also joined by my Communications Director, Matt Giabalo. I didn't see him earlier, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, and thank you for being here, and thank you for undertaking this initiative. This is greatly appreciated. I think that this is something that I've been screaming about since I was first put on this council, and to see an actual policy put into place to try to address it is greatly appreciated. However, I don't know, Mr. Chair, if we're going to get into that in a second, but I wanted to ask where we are for overtime versus where Mr. Seneme and the Budget Department thinks you should be. Do we know, do we have that information?
I think we do.
So we've given, based on the budget, the fiscal 20 budget, we need to have about a $5 million reduction in overtime spending. So we've given a target of about $1.6 million per pay period. Based on the first two pay periods, we have not hit that. I am pleased with the direction things are going, because they have taken this issue seriously, including the new policy, and working on some, you know, bureau by bureau and subunit by subunit targets. But I think, you know, we'll need to see some improvement quickly to get us on track. And I hope that this new policy, let's say, call it two more pay periods, that we should see some improvement right away. But so far, for the first two, we did not, they are not on track at the moment.
So where were we, exactly?
It was 1.9 and 2.2 for the first two pay periods, but if there's somebody from fiscal there can...
And in that most recent pay period, we did have the Archscape event, which drove a lot of overtime for that part of the pay period, which accounts for some of it, maybe not all of it, but for a large portion of it.
Deputy Gillis?
Mr. President, I'll just confirm that Mr. Seneme is correct. It was 1.89 for the first pay period and 2.2 for the second one.
The second one is the one doing Archscape, correct?
Correct.
And Mr. Seneme, where did they end at the end of the fiscal year? How far over were they?
So we're not quite wrapped up with our closeout process, but it'll be somewhere in the 48 to 49 million dollar range will be, we believe, the final figure.
And do you remember what the overreach was from the previous fiscal year before that?
I don't have it in front of me, but it's somewhere in that same range, but I can get it to you guys. Do you have it in front of you, Jim?
Deputy?
I do. It's, last year, it was 48.1, and the year prior to that was 47.2.
And, Mr. Chair, my last question for a second. Mr. Commissioner, since the rollout of the policy, have you, have we had two questions? How, one, how has it been received by the rank and file? I would guess there will be some issues there. And two, have we had to have command or other level people take actions or people try not to follow the policy?
I think it was received well, because we used technology to deliver the message in a very 21st century way, as opposed to just issuing a written policy and standing in roll call, having supervisors explain it. We did that, but we followed up with this training video that went into every member's training, training catalog or database, if you will, with their, it's called Power DMS. So every employee got it, and every employee was commanded to view it, and it was shown in all roll calls for several days. So we do believe it was received well in the format that we rolled it out in. Certainly, it is a culture shock to the department of having to go through the steps of asking permission, being granted permission in the parent organization or the district in which the officer is permanently assigned, and then having to certify that the overtime was worked in the assignment, where it was worked if it's not different from the parent assignment. So that's a real big difference. We only launched it last week, and so the training went out last, early last week, and so we made sure everybody saw it. And now we're just drilling down to monitor supervisors, that they are actually granting permission for people. And then we also, what's not in here that we didn't talk about, it's in the video, but we didn't talk about it, we gave them the tools to track their own overtime. So there is a spreadsheet attached to this that every officer has that self-populates their hours, so that they can keep a track of their hours, so they can know when they're getting close to their limit, ask to knock over, and then self-manage themselves, and then gives the supervisors the capacity and the tool to really monitor that, so that when a supervisor notices an employee is fatigued, or a poor performer, or a number of things, that supervisor is usually compelled to say, "No, you cannot go work more overtime," especially if you're too tired here, or you're not performing well here, or a number of other issues. We want to make supervisors really accountable. And so now, this week and going forward, we're drilling down on that, which we believe over time will see people stay under the limit. And under special circumstances, they can ask permission, and it can be granted under special circumstances, but only when permission is asked and it is granted appropriately.
And we also, I just added what the Commissioner said, we established a weekly work group that is meant to provide a continuous feedback loop from members of the sworn staff of the agency to funnel it up to us. We know this isn't perfect, and so we want to tweak it as we go forward. Hopefully, that work group will meet less frequently as we get farther along. There's also a work group that exists over here in City Hall with members of the Mayor's City Stat Team and BBMR to work on tweaking it as well and moving towards a technological solution, which will ultimately replace this kind of rudimentary way of doing this, but this is what we have to work with right now.
And thank you. Mr. Seneme, just a quick follow-up. So what other measures is BBMR taking to help them deal with the overtime issue? Because if they're already, if we keep, let's just say they miss their mark for the rest of the year, that means they're going to be over budget again for overtime. Have you thought about other measures of what you can do to help them get on track, but also if you need to take even more drastic measures by saying, like, unless you guys are on target, you won't get A, B, C, X, Y, and Z from us in order to accomplish that goal?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things. You know, we've been working together very closely on this. The process that the Commissioner is describing, it's, I would characterize it, it's kind of a bottom-up approach. You're taking the police officer, making sure they're accountable, and then the direct, their direct supervisors. We've also, will be working with the department on what I would call a little bit more of a top-down approach about how many hours can be deployed within each unit. Because what I've described to them is, it shouldn't be a surprise when we see $2.3 million. We should know that we deployed what we deployed in terms of hours, and that was kind of filtered down through the group to get them on track. So that, I think, is another part of this, is that throughout the organization, each unit has to have an understanding of how many hours can I deploy. I think obviously, asking for the correct position, the correct permission will help that. In terms of what is out there that we can stop and what we might have to, there is investments in the budget this year for both equipment, some significant equipment upgrades in terms of radios, and some IT investments as well. And, you know, those are things that we've warned them that we have to be cautious about and that we can't release yet for spending until we see this improve. And if it does improve, then we can say, "Let's continue with those items that were budgeted for those purposes."
Thank you. I'm done for now, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner, first, I wanted to publicly commend you on the changes that you're working on related to overtime.
Thank you all.
It is certainly far beyond long overdue, and it's very refreshing to see those changes start to take effect, and I'm looking forward to seeing what those bear in the near future. First question I have is on the cadets. I noticed that in the presentation, the number of cadets hired compared to those that applied, seven out of 288, is a bit low compared to the number of officers who have applied versus those who have been hired. Is there a background story there? What do you think is going on?
I think now there's a really intensified interest and intensified effort to go after younger people, to talk about the culture of a career in law enforcement, and to try to attract them to our profession through a cadet program. I just think there was a loss of interest through things that happened in this city and in other cities that turned people away from the profession, especially as young people communicate the way they do, through social media and through an anti-police sentiment. Now, we have to really overcome that, and that's what part of this campaign is, to attract young people in the cadet, the age group for cadets, the age group for police officers, and then auxiliary police officers. And I think we have a more intense focus on it now, and it's really designed to reach them through a digital targeted campaign.
Do we know why the percentage of those hired is not commensurate with the percentage of officers that are hired?
I do not know. It probably, I would be speculating, but it's probably due to things that are disqualifying factors that are similar to police disqualifying factors, and that would be criminal histories and/or some admitted drug use and other things that are automatic disqualifiers. But we want to catch people at a certain age to bring them into our cadet program, so that we could nurture them during the time that they're too young to be a police officer but are our right age to, number one, learn our culture; number two, prevent them from having bad experiences in the workplace and outside of high school; and, number three, prevent them from getting caught up in drug use that will be a disqualifier for them when they do apply. And so we want to make sure that we're capturing that group to bring them into our pipeline for employment.
And similar to that, can you or one of the members of your senior team give an update on the auxiliary police? Just the number of officers we have, who's in the pipeline, et cetera? Thank you.
Good evening, Lieutenant, thank you. Lieutenant Colonel Briscoe, good evening. So for our auxiliaries that we have, we currently have 19. There are 10 that have graduated. We have nine that are pending a ceremony and to be uniformed in that process. We have five more that are ready for next class, and we're still actively recruiting. And that's where we are. They are all assigned to a district, the ones that we use that are active.
And when do we think that next class is going into place?
So we're still recruiting. We're still recruiting, and we're shifting how we're training them to get them more in alignment with the Commissioner's goal in terms of training, so they'll all come under the academy process and be trained as they should through the academy process. So that next class is pending.
And I imagine that there's some type of frequency of follow-up with the officers in the auxiliary unit to see how they're doing, are they enjoying what they're doing, et cetera?
Absolutely. So we continue to handhold with them, reach out to them, allow them to come in on a voluntary basis, to experience the events, as to how we use the other auxiliary members, so that that way we can try to continue to keep them in the process to be auxiliary members of the team. So we do recruitment efforts as we take our tables out to other events. We also recruit for auxiliary. We just did a recruitment effort while we were at the Day of Hope, and we recruited, I want to say there were two individuals that we were able to recruit there.
Great. Commissioner, my second question revolves around some state funds that I believe the city is due. Seven million was for technology upgrades with the legislature fenced off, and the governor has not yet released. And then I believe there was 14.13 million, plus or minus, that was, had a restriction on it around you releasing a crime plan, which you did before August 1st, as required by state law. Can you speak to where those two buckets of money are at, and what efforts are being made to get those to the police department?
Yeah, sure. We are certainly planning a very imminent meeting with the governor, but we have done our due diligence, number one, to produce the crime plan, which has been made public, and to meet the requirements given to us by the governor's office on releasing it by the timeline. I'll let my deputy chief come in.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee, Andy Smully and Deputy Chief of Staff. As far as the money that was withheld, as far as the crime plan, we've submitted the crime plan by August 1st. The budget chairs, the budget committees have 45 days with which to respond with comments and review, after which time, if they are satisfied, which we hope that they will be, and we're working very closely with them, then those funds will be released. And that is money for Baltimore Police Department, for the State's Attorney, and as well as the City of Baltimore through the disparity grant. With respect to the $7 million that was fenced off that you referred to, we have been in contact with GoCap. They have given us verbal indication that they are going to find other sources to fund this request. We are putting together a grant proposal for them to consider, in which they said, once we submit, which we hope to do within the month of August, that they will have a quick turnaround and will let us know quickly thereafter, after we submit, that the funding will be given.
I'll just thank you for the comprehensive update. I'll just say that I think it's really unfortunate that our police department in our city is being held hostage to politics, when that money was clearly set aside with clear intent... being held hostage to politics when that money was clearly set aside with clear intent from the General Assembly, and it's very unfortunate, but I appreciate your guys' efforts to go and get those resources as quickly as humanly possible. Mr. President, and then we're going to Councilman Schleifer.
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner, just a quick follow-up on that. Have you personally reached out to the Governor to see if he would meet, even to discuss these issues with you in person?
We have talked to members of his staff, and I've talked to his Chief of Staff, and we've had conversations to get a meeting with the two of us, which is pretty imminent. And so, yes, we have had those conversations about their willingness to meet to talk about it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Schleifer.
My question was regarding the auxiliary, I guess, for Lieutenant Colonel Briscoe. Do we have the numbers of how many people applied versus how many we've accepted?
I don't have those with me, but I can gladly get those to you. I can tell you in the ones that we put, the class of 19, we initially had 21, and we did have two that could not, did not meet the standard to come through, but I can get you the entire number for who's applied versus who we've been able to onboard.
Okay, and you said the next round of...
The date is pending for training, because we are making some adjustments in that process of training them. The training is currently 12 weeks on Saturdays, so we're looking at how we're training them and the length of time that it takes to get them trained and to do something a bit more comprehensive and robust.
Got it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good.
A follow-up to the recruitment initiative for cadets. There is a new initiative that we have with Baltimore Community College to incentivize members of the community college to become part of the cadet program, which would have some, if not all, of their tuition affected or end or waived by having membership in our cadet program. So, there's a number of things that we're doing. We're being very intentional and very proactive to go after that younger demographic to create a pipeline for our employment.
Got it. And Commissioner, if Chief Gillis and I, or Deputy Commissioner Gillis and I, had worked on a spreadsheet at the beginning of when we first started these hearings a year ago, if it'd be possible to just populate the one slide for the auxiliary, that would be greatly appreciated.
Absolutely.
Kind of similar format, Jim, if you recall. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioner. A couple, first of all, I just appreciate all the information that you have been providing with your plan and the, your campaign efforts for hirees. But I'm going to focus on, I think we also need continued data on changes, particularly with your females in promotion, particularly African-American females. We've come a long way, and it's taken a long time for black females to be promoted in many things, especially the Police Department, and I think it's important that we keep data on the women that we do have and how they are progressing and the changes. I know that you're doing changes within, and of course, we continue to have these changes in the Northwest District, which still, in my eyes, seems to be a testing ground, which needs to stop. But my interest lies there, particularly because I'm an African-American female in leadership role, and I'm also feeling slighted with communication with you directly. I have, I definitely communicate with Michelle, but, you know, we have dialogue periodically when I see you out, and you ask me to send you emails, and I don't get a response, and I'm feeling not just the representative of the 6th District, but also Vice President of this council, that I'm being slighted, and I would like that to be corrected. You know, there's some strong problems that are happening, and one of my pet peeves have been prostitution, and that was in one of the emails. You know, all this plays a role in the women that we hire and how they can help, and, you know, I'm kind of wrapping all this up together, and I'd like you to respond.
Well, absolutely. First of all, I want to be as transparent and as open and as accessible as I possibly can. I want to be the most accessible Police Commissioner the city has ever had. So, I offer you an apology for that, but I need to make sure that I'm getting the emails that you're sending, because I get them to my phone, to my iPad, but I'm not seeing them on that account. So, I want to make sure that I'm getting the ones that you're sending to either the one that goes to my account or the generic one, which is just commissioner@baltimorepolice.org. And I don't know, because I'm not seeing those coming from you. And the ones that I see directly from council members, I'm responding. So, I want to make sure that I'm getting that. If I am and I'm not, I'll offer you that apology, because I would offer to you that any of your colleagues that call me or email me would probably say I'm responding, and I would not do that to you alone. I assure you and promise you that. And so, thank you for bringing that to my attention. And if it's me, I'll correct it. If it's our system, I'll fix it. And if you give me the money, I'll buy it. But we want to correct it, and thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Councilmember Burnett?
Excuse me, but about, I apologize. About the issue of promotions, I am sensitive to that. I'm aware of that, and our team makes assessments daily and weekly about who we have and what we have, who performs, and how we select, hire, and promote. And we actually have a new promotional policy that we have, that we did not have before, with a criteria in how we vet candidates and how candidates apply for certain positions and our jobs and our promotions, and compete against each other in their career field for a position, for a promotion, and our for specialized assignment. And there's a scoring matrix, and we created an entire panel interview process to make sure that we are selecting the absolute best person, and that we can eliminate cronyism and nepotism and favoritism, and it's a merit-based promotion. But I am sensitive to that and to the diversity issue and the need to make sure that everything we do is fair and equitable. So, thank you for bringing that to me also. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Councilman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner, and to your team coming here today. I just had a couple of quick questions. One, it was mentioned around recruitment retention. Can you explain what the process is for assigning officers to districts? What sort of equity lens is used in that process? I've had concerns from residents, you know, I'm frequently telling them, you know, what I know about the average size of an average shift, and it doesn't seem to be growing, at least in the Southwest. But more importantly, as officers are graduating, coming out of the academy, can you just lay out, you know, how do you look at staffing levels at the district level, how are officers assigned, and that kind of thing?
I think that's a, I think that's a good concern to have. I have that concern as well. What I can tell you right now, absent the staffing plan that is forthcoming from a consultant that we've hired to help us produce a staffing plan that looks at that, there are some goals, and if you look at my crime plan, there are some goals that had not been set. And the staffing, the way, you know, police chiefs ought to be doing it should be based on the goals. What's the response time goal? What is the detective caseload per detective, according to the National Best Practice and Average? What's the investigative time? How much time do we want on assignment first, off of assignment, which is occupied versus unoccupied time, taking in the volume of calls that come in versus the volume of crimes that are occurring, and the difference between just crimes versus calls that are not crimes, distance traveled, and then the relief factor, you know, off days, vacation days, sick days, and then factoring all of that in. I will tell you that it is, in my opinion, crime-based and workload-volume based, and not necessarily population-based, because there are some districts that could have a higher population but aren't receiving the volume of calls or the volume of crimes. But our staffing plan, which is forthcoming, will help us, through the science and through a number of national experts made up of that consultant firm, really drill down how many officers we need for a department, how many officers we need per district based on call volume and crime, and then workload capacity, to determine mathematically how many should be there, and then creating some level of equity across the city, but to make sure the equity is, everybody gets the same response time. Everybody gets the same amount of detectives that have a comparable workload, and the amount of officers available for calls for service versus hotspot policing and our community engagement, and how often we want to do that across city lines, across district lines, shall I say.
And just so the committee, because I do want to come back to that once you have released that staffing plan, can you talk about how it's done currently, so that we can compare to the changes moving forward?
Absolutely.
That was a question. Yeah, sort of, how do you do it now?
Oh, sure. I go first. All right. So, part of what we're doing now, when we look at academy graduation, is that we do provide for equitable distribution across districts right now, because that's kind of, again, in the absence of a plan, we're looking at what the staffing level is across each district, and trying to be able to give equal distribution across what we have, district by district. Now, I could forward to you a recent transfer order that shows that that kind of distribution is done, again, with the equitable distribution across each district, if you'd like to see that. That's something recently we did.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah, to kind of show you what that looks like, and that's something we put out.
And the reason, sort of, I'm getting at is, one, I think, looking at it from a response time perspective is incredibly helpful, because right now, the size of the districts really do matter, when I think about, you know, Southwest being 10.2 square miles, very different than other parts of the city, and so, being able to get to those spaces from Fontaine Hill Avenue to Diggiville is pretty far. And so, there's concerns that, you know, given the staffing levels at that one particular district, you know, are we meeting those numbers? I don't, you know, I don't want to say we are or aren't, but just concerns that, you know, the district doesn't seem to be growing, but we have, you know, an incredible amount of turf to cover and a lot of violence.
Yeah, we're taking all that into consideration, and what I just described to you is the way it ought to be done.
Sure, and I got that, and that's what I was like, all right, let me understand, like, I know where we're trying to get to, but where are we right now?
Yeah, right, where we are right now is, we are because of the staffing shortage, because we acknowledge that we need far more officers than we have. We know that we're short. What we're doing now is, we have to account for the growth of the department versus the attrition of the department. So, when there are promotions, first of all, when there are vacancies, people that leave, and there are critical vacancies, we are, when an academy class comes in and adds to our manpower strength, we are backfilling critical vacancies and then critical promotions. So, when we promote, which we did last week, when we promote and create vacancies because the person left their assignment and got promoted, if that's a critical position, perhaps that's something we have to backfill. But we're trying to make sure that we're growing the net gain in the patrol while also backfilling critical positions and meeting contractual needs for supervisory roles, making sure we have the appropriate number of supervisors. So, right now, it's really just offsetting vacancies by backfilling them, and then when we make promotions, further creating more vacancies, that we backfill the only critical ones, not all of them, but the critical ones.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Commissioner, this is actually more for Mr. Blindi. I just want to make sure that you guys are pushing the department to also work with planning around the census, because we know we passed police redistricting through Annapolis this year, and it requires that the district should be redrawn the year after the census, and to make sure that we're meeting all the targets that were laid out and all the considerations that were laid out in that piece of legislation, because I think it would be important and actually would help us if we included that with the consultant now, so that we're already used to doing it that way.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. President, getting an accurate count and a full and complete count is incredibly important to the mayor, and thank you for your comments, because that's certainly something we need to be thinking about as we get that accurate count.
Thank you, and I just will follow up, we'll make sure that we follow up, because we want to try to see if we can see what the requirements are in the legislation. I could tell you, but I'm not going to rattle them off right now, but also to work with the consultant that we had who's looking at staffing now, so that they include that in their staffing model, their staffing assessment, so that the agencies are accustomed to doing it the way that it has to do by law.
We will make sure that we follow up with the Police Department and with the council, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner. I actually wanted to, I had two questions, one of which is really quick. The numbers, I was intrigued by some of the numbers up there and also on the larger sheet here from the police officer applications and hires year-to-date. Normally, when I'm intrigued by numbers, I would just come to you afterwards or go to Michelle and ask to set something up. But what I'm intrigued by specifically is the relationship between the percentage of applications and the percentage of hires for some of the demographics. For the recent set, for the most recent, that relationship is pretty good. For the year-to-date, not so good. And so, what I was wondering was, would you be interested in coming to Councilwoman Sneed and the Labor Committee to have an in-depth conversation at a later time about how you are making that change between the old percentages and the new percentages, sort of like what we did recently, where we drilled into the fire department's hiring practices?
I'd be happy to come.
Okay, thank you. But the real question I had for today was more about overtime, and that speaks to, we have been told in the past on multiple occasions that there was an overtime audit being conducted. Where are we in terms of that, the completion of that?
Mr. Councilman?
Hi.
This is probably a question really for the Solicitor's Office, and the Solicitor's Office is spearheading the overtime audit with an outside firm, Baker Tilly, and in anticipation of this question, I had meant to reach out to the Solicitor's Office prior to tonight to find out when the second half of the overtime audit would be produced. I know that the first half has been produced, and they're in the process of the second half. I'm pretty sure that they're pretty close to getting to the end of it, and we'll be able to, we already are utilizing some of the information that we are able to look at at an executive level to try to start planning now to address the issues that are the findings of the audit essentially. Police Commissioner Memorandum 1901 and 1902, those two...
Okay.
And I, that can be done, absolutely, yes.
Is that something where, so there's nobody here from the city Solicitor's Office?
Not to my knowledge, Councilman, but I'm certainly happy to work with Mr. Gillis and the Solicitor's Office to follow up.
I'll try to get the answer, I'll try to get the answer during this hearing, so that we can...
That's exactly what we, that's the conclusion we were hoping you were going to come to on your own.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Sneed?
During a, thank you. During a budget hearing, there was a question that Councilman Dorsey made reference to in reference to where are the officers. He broke down the, he brought down a chart of what he did, and the Chief of Staff, I'm glad you're shaking your head, said, "We're trying to figure where we are at as well." And I'm wondering if you can give us an update of what you found.
So, part of the strategy that we have is, again, to making sure we have a good understanding of where people are working, and part of this challenge was making sure we had our updates to the HRIS system, which is the Information System ADP that we use for payroll. We're in the process of updating several historical edits to that that are long overdue. That is a work in progress for us, but it is a monumental task, because it was for months neglected, and these changes and transfers and details that we're finding, as our administration has come into the Police Department, are finding, is a monumental task for us. A couple of things. The first is the need for a strong workforce management technology solution. This is also represented in the Commissioner's plan. It's also part of some of the consent decree-related requirements for us when it comes to close and effective supervision. We could play catch-up on the manual processes, but we're only going to fall back behind unless we have a strong digital workforce management and scheduling management system. That is a solution that we're working on developing right now. There are certain resources that we currently use to schedule officers in patrol. That is a resource we're looking at expanding for the entire department. It's a solution that's already on the ground, and we're looking at dedicating technological contractor resources that we can quickly spin up to be able to deploy that for, across the entire department. that we can quickly spin up to be able to deploy that for, across the entire department. It's also going to be a tool that we're going to be able to use to effectuate these overtime changes. This is, again, the first step of what we've talked about in making sure we're keeping our accountability measures in place for the manual process, but the best way to do it is through a technological solution, which is what the Commissioner has described. We've already begun trying to scope out what that looks like as far as the deployment is concerned, but we do have technology dollars that have been set aside for us this year and from the state. Again, as what Deputy Chief Somaliyan had mentioned, there is a part of a proposal that we're sending to the state to be able to identify a series of, of projects for which would be applicable, that $7 million that Chairman Costello had mentioned especially. So, now, part of that effort is to get our house in order on that, and we are actively working on that right now.
Thank you. Commissioner, can you talk a little bit about, there was, there was an initial overtime audit, maybe this is for Mr. Blindi, there was an initial overtime audit completed by the solicitor, and we had an agreement with the previous mayor and her administration that there were short-term and long-term items in there, and that all of those short-term items would be implemented before the end of fiscal '19, and that there were some long-term things that would get programmed in the 2020 budget. Bob, do you, you remember this discussion, when we were talking about the supplementary for overtime last year?
I, I do. And...
Is that just part of the larger overtime audit that the solicitor's still working on?
Yeah, so that was, that was the part one of the audit with the general recommendations, and then what we had discussed at that hearing about what was being done, but the final portion of it, I believe, is not done, like you're saying.
Mr. Chairman, I can follow up on that. That's correct. There was a spreadsheet that was developed that had some of the, that was the first leg of the audit, and what I was just talking about with Councilman Henry and the, Mr. President, was the second leg of the audit, which is the completion of the entire audit. The first leg did produce some deliverables, some were short-term and long-term, as you described. To my knowledge, I don't think that any have been delivered upon yet. That, I would say, is on me and the BPD and, and us getting ourselves organized, as we have been over the last several months, and there's been tremendous transition, and I know that you all are sick of hearing that as an excuse, essentially. But the first step in our deliverable is this new policy on overtime. But with regard to the other short-term and long-term ones, yes, we will go back and look and see what has been implemented and not implemented, certainly.
Yeah, and I, I don't necessarily have a, a problem with the answer being that those specific items weren't implemented. And yes, we've heard far too frequently in these chambers that we're going through a transition, but I think we all understand we're finally going through the correct transition right now. So, I think everyone is, I don't want to speak for my colleagues, I don't see anyone shaking their head otherwise. I think we all understand and appreciate the transition you're going through. So, there's not an issue there. I just wanted to...
And, and I think if I could just add to that, a lot of times, what has been a stalling point for everybody, and it is that there is a technological solution that exists out there, and we are going to wait for this technological panacea to come through, and Commissioner Harrison has recognized that, you know, that we were able to manage this before there was technology. We can do it now, even though there is technology, and we're not going to wait for it, and that is what we're doing, so.
Good, good. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up on that, while I understand that there's been a transition, it's unacceptable that the phase of things that were not delivered on. And I guess, this is really not just on BPD, but this is on the Law Department as well, and, and also, to a lesser extent, the mayor's office, because they have had a big transition themselves. So, Mr. Chair, what, what I would like to see is if we could, by tomorrow, get that initial list to see where they are and see how, how quickly we can get those turned around.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, any other questions? But, Mr. President?
Thank you. Mr. Commissioner, to go back to overtime for a second, are there any units that are, are actually within their overtime and actually following, meeting their budget?
I believe there are units, districts, and divisions that stay with, individual officers that stay under the limit, and there are some units and districts that do not go over. There's an operational need, because we are short, and then there is a, a cultural shift from being, from deploying to a crime-centric deployment, to, from a geographic deployment, and then figuring out how many people we need per shift, and then backfilling those positions with overtime. That's what the staffing plan will produce, how many people we need based on the call volume. But by the same token, we are not waiting for the technology. We are working right now to figure out what calls, we know our crimes and our anticipated crimes, our perceived crimes, and what calls that are just not, and how to socialize and move away from responding to those, thereby reducing workload. Then, there's some technology, when we get it, will automatically reduce workload, going from a paper environment to a digital environment, thereby freeing up even more officer time, so we can recalibrate the correct number of officers per district, per platoon, per shift, you know, for, for the entire department.
And, and Mr. President, part of, part of the struggle we've had on the accounting side of this is a difference between where a person actually works the OT versus where they actually live as a, you know, in a parent organization. If I'm in the eastern, I work the western, the system's recording it as though the OT has worked in the eastern, where I live, not where I go, where I worked the extra OT. And so, the struggle that we've now had seen, we've been able to put into place better reporting mechanisms to be able to track that. And again, as, as Bob had mentioned as well, we're going to be working with their team to update all of our overtime budgets, you know, per section, so that we're able to maintain those goals. We haven't had a chance to do that meeting yet. We are planning on doing that, but it's a critical part of making sure that we give the right instructions about overtime burn rate, but it has to be paired with the ability to track where the overtime is being worked, not just who is working it.
Yes, thank you. And if you, Mr. Commissioner, if you could provide to, to the chair that kind of breakdown, like which divisions, which bureaus, which district are actually coming under whatever the set overtime amount is for them versus the others, so that we can have a better understanding department-wide of where, where we are.
Absolutely.
And then my, my next question is actually something that you just alluded to, because you know where, what I believe on this, as far as call reduction, I think that we should pull the Band-Aid off and go full-on, you know, full-on emergency mode and respond to emergencies with emergency fashion and non-emergencies in a, in a non-emergency fashion, because we cannot continue to allow our patrol officers to essentially be call-takers, because that's what they are. They don't have a lot of time to proactively patrol. They're running from call to call. They're not meeting people. They're not meeting business people. They're not meeting communities. They're not interacting with young people, and they definitely don't have the proactive time to proactively be where they need to be, interacting with the people that we know are committing violence. Can you talk about how, how you're going to go about that? Are we going to roll that out in phases, or what phase we are now? How are we going to push the department in a, in a way that I think that we need to heighten it? I know it's going to be culture shock, not just for the department, but for the entire city, but in the long, long term, I think it's going to be the best thing for us.
Yes, sir. For a few weeks now, we, we are not, first of all, we're not waiting for the technology. We're not waiting for the staffing plan, because it's going to tell us what we already know. And we are being proactive. Members of my team and I are, for a few weeks now, been assessing call, call-for-service data, trying to assess what are we spending the most time on in all those emergencies, all those even police-related items, and are, it, does it require patrol response? And we're now coming up with a number of calls that are coming in, but the data is not always clean data. And so, while we get one signal code, it really doesn't tell us what we really need to know about that call, because there could be multiple types of calls built into one code. So, we need to really break that out and extrapolate the data a little bit further. I do agree with you that sooner rather than later, this department will be coming back to you to tell you that we want to move in the direction of responding to emergencies, crimes, perceived crimes, so that we can investigate, but things that are not criminal activity or perceived criminal activity, we can find other ways to do that by moving more calls to telephone reporting and/or a web-based reporting model and/or an elimination of the response altogether.
And again, sir, one of the things we are actually planning on doing at the end of this week is I'm assembling a team of our operations folks, our communications folks. We're, we're taking a look at the data. I asked them to pull the last 12 months' worth of data, call volume, how the durations of those calls has been covered, how many calls we've had, and getting an idea of how much officer time has been spent responding, not just getting to the call, but handling the call as well, and then looking at the code priority to try to cross-reference what it is we're actually doing, that, that meeting is happening this week. And as a result, we're going to be able to start being able to strategize how that phasing program will look, and once we have a plan for that, we can definitely share it with your office.
Yeah, I think that we would have to do something similar to, to the recruitment campaign, just getting that information out to people.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. This is, this is not something where, I mean, as much as we need to get it done very quickly, we absolutely want to socialize what the changes are, because we want to make sure that if it's something that's a result of a person calling the 911 center for, that we are able to socialize to the, to the residents of what we will, you know, what level of response they should expect if they're calling for that. That's something we do want to be able to put together in a campaign and socialize it for folks. And we'll need, we'll need your help and, and others on the council's support in looking at that and explaining why it's important to, to triage those things.
Thank you. And my, and the next thing, Mr. Commissioner, just going back to the officer applications and the officer hirings. So, we know that year-to-date, we've had 731 people from the city apply to be a police officer. I assume that's a big increase over the year before, but, and that's 29% of applications. However, only 18% of our hires have been from Baltimore City. Can you talk about the, the drop-off between that and the reasons why? I just want to see, like, what, what reasons they're being disqualified for? Is there something that we have to do on the community side? Is it a policy side? Is it a physical fitness? What, like, what are the reasons that they're being disqualified?
Those are good concerns, and they're, it's a combination of all of that. They're usually a combination of work history and our performance in work history, self-reported drug use, and a combination of things like, like that. Those are automatic disqualifiers. That doesn't necessarily mean that there's more of that from the city than not in the city, because there is a medical exam, there is a psychological exam, there is a physical fitness component, and so there are a number of robust qualifiers and disqualifiers from the application to hire phase, that people are eliminated at various portions. And then, you know, we're competing against all the other police departments in America, and just like the people from Baltimore applying for the Baltimore Police Department, they're applying for other departments outside of Baltimore. Likewise, our out-of-town and out-of-state applicants are applying to come here away from their home cities. And so, we're, we're just, it's all of that working together. And generally, generally, people who apply to their home police department, usually apply to a handful. When people apply to departments across the country, they usually apply to 10 or more. So, we're, we're really working with a small percentage of qualified applicants, and usually, the percentage is somewhere around 2% to 3% of people make it from application to hire, and we're all competing for that 2.5% to 3%.
So, just a, just a follow-up about that, because it's, it seems similar. One, has the change in the marijuana recency helped us at all? Because I know, we know before that it, you know, was a longer time period that they used, but have we seen that being able to help? Because my, my guess is that when you talk about drug use in Baltimore, that's typically the one that will be the automatic disqualifier.
I think there is a difference between the state of Maryland versus some other states. For example, there's a three-year disqualification in the state of Maryland, but back in Louisiana, where I used to work, it was a two-year.
Yeah.
And the two-year is more aligned with the federal agencies that have that requirement. So, it's actually stricter here than it is in most other states.
So, this is something that we could definitely talk to our folks in Annapolis. So, you think there's two years in most places?
In, our federal partners have the two-year restriction, not the three-year restriction.
So, you can be a FBI agent if you, but okay. And then, also, it seems to be also a big drop-off for female candidates, too. There are 25% of the applications, but only 11% of hires. However, Hispanics are only 10% of the applications, but they're 19% of the hires. So, if you guys could break down that data for us and just see what the trends are, so that we can see if there's anything we can do on our, it would be appreciated.
Yes, sir.
Colleagues, any other questions, budget-related? Recruitment, et cetera? Okay, we're going to go into recess, and we'll be back in two to three minutes with the second hearing. Hey, Andy? Hey, Andy? Hey, Jim? Is he, um, is Rich going to go, like, district by district, district by district for the second half, or?